So at this point, um for those in the public who've been following along, we've just continued three fifty seven Sterling Road. Um McGovern Boulevard Extension has requested continuance until June tenth, and I have a motion to.
So.
Check it out.
Okay, any discussion? Here and none, I'll call for a vote, Mike. Kendra.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
And Frank, yes, so four oh to continue until June tenth. Okay, so the next we have is a request for a division of land by Fort Pond Realty LLC. Uh this is for land where approval is not required, so it's another A and R lot and um. Haley is back in front of us and I'm sure will walk us through the whole thing.
Thank you, care, I appreciate the board for having me this evening. I'm also Julie Bar for there, Mark Wheeler prepared the plan in case there's any technical questions on the approval not required. Um although I can share my opinion here of the plan that was submitted um in Mylar.
I'm sorry, Haley, more questions?
Sure.
Uh uh Mark, are you with GFI or you?
Uh I'm uh total answer.
Over.
T O P E R C A U P E R.
So the plan, I'm sorry, am I okay with the pink meter?
Yes.
Okay, so the plan in front of you here um is basically a zoomed in version of the key sheet that we provided um. Also to kind of help you navigate where the parcel or the lots are located. Um we are creating two lots with this plan. Uh lot number one is six point five nine acres labeled not a buildable lot. Currently owned by Mountain Laurel Realty Company, um lot two we're creating is sixty five point two seven acres, also labeled not a buildable lot. Um the sheet that Mark prepared and he can better explain is land that is registered land. So we prepared this plan in performance with the land board requirements, which we filed with them and they have approved. So our final step was to come to the plan board for endorsement. Um and then uh as I mentioned, we also filed a supplemental sheet, key sheet, which I I colored for you here. To kind of show you how this um fits into our development that was approved last fall. So the blue area outlines the project site. The green hatched area is lot number two. And then the red uh hatched area is lot number one. Lot number one will be broken off and conveyed to Fort Pond LLC, also known as uh the Fletcher family. Um they own the development to the um west side here. And then the lot number two will be retained by GFI for the the project that we had approved. Uh as I mentioned late, late fall, um. Have any answering questions or Mark if you want to add anything, but I think that that pretty much um summarizes it.
So I I guess my first question would be looking at this key sheet. Can you, so there's Fort Pond LLC in a number of places. So. Uh Mountain Laurel is still Chisholm, which my understanding is it's the land that GFI has under agreement at six ninety six.
Correct.
Okay, so then you have the formal former craft property. This is Fort Pond Industrial Property Owner LLC.
That's correct.
Okay, who's that?
Um I think it's still it ran with me or whoever the the crafts or unless they they might have sold it to somebody else.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because the other two lots showing us five and six on here. That were made part of five eighty as part of the development plan or listed as having a different owner.
So five was listed, um Fort Pond LLC came to the Unified Project for their expansion, that's right. Six was always intended to come to us. That they submitted a um A and R plan that was approved, I also think late last fall or maybe in the last spring. Um but but lot number six was always part of GFI's development and it was not, it was excluded from the uh Unified or Craft Project.
Okay, and that's always been, so is that part, that's part of the six ninety six plans?
Yes, that's correct. No, I'm sorry, Frank, you're not looking at this, this blue color. This outlines the um the development area that was included in our site plan application.
Yep, okay, uh so the Fort Pond Industrial Property Owner then also still owns the well. So that's correct, et cetera.
Yes, that's correct, yep.
But the fifty eight acres are owned by Fort Pond LLC, but isn't that, so who is that?
Fort Pond LLC is the the Fletcher family.
Okay, so lot six has actually been or about to be conveyed to you from the Fletchers.
That's correct.
And they are also conveying lot five to Craft or whatever.
Yes, and lot seven up to the north on the north side of the well, that's also owned by the Fletchers, that will be conveyed to GFI as well.
Okay. But that is not on your six ninety six plan set.
It is.
Is that?
It's kind of weird, it jumps out over the top, if you remember, there's a stormwater basin that we designed in that.
Yeah, no, that's right, I was just looking at the angles and different triangles.
It might also be helpful if I quote wrote up this plan, which is our approved site plan with the blue outline again of the project area. And the red is the lot one that we're conveying to Fort Pond LLC.
Yep, okay. Well, those were my basic questions, um throw those into the board.
Yeah, none.
Yep, all good. At least I had some questions for you, so. We got something.
I got to sprawl out my ninety two pages of the other plans and like match everything up again, so.
Yep.
Now they might become fire.
So, okay, well, at that point, um so we have a request for an A and R. And apparently the board's questions have been answered. So that only leaves one thing. Come on, it's your turn.
I would make a motion to approve the proposed A and R subdivision.
As set out in the.
As set out in the application, sorry.
Okay.
You need to know, check leader.
What?
The motion to approve the, you know, approval not required.
Yeah, we still have to bless it on some level.
Right. I make a motion to bless the A and R as provided in the.
We're just out of land, but still, nonetheless, okay, and I heard a second, is there any, is there any further discussion? I'll call for a vote, George.
I mean.
Mike?
Yes.
Kendra?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Haley, it's been so brief.
Uh it's been so wonderful though, thank you very much.
She missed us, she didn't come back in time.
I I I know, you know, we look forward to the next one.
Thank you very much.
Which for your sake hopefully isn't a site plan adjustment to put a well.
That's true, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'll talk to Mylar, Brian Murray, folks.
Permit.
And uh uh I'll let you know this one is hopefully by the end of the week.
Do you have the Mylar?
It's downstairs.
We can sign it on the way up.
Yeah.
In fact, maybe I already signed it on the way up.
In pockets, yes, okay, and so. Contact you.
I'll pick it up and then I do a report as registered, that's. Yeah, okay, great, thank you very much, I'll do the plan.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Thanks, thanks.
Come back soon.
Haley is my daughter's name, so getting me and Haley in the same sentence, it makes a little sense.
All right, thanks, all right, nice to hear.
Well, Nina?
Oh, you're there.
We did our work. So. And in terms of Regina, because we didn't have any from other continuing ones, um. That she would not be excluded under muller issues.
Yeah. Hey, we're trying to work, should we start to ask the bar?
She looked at it, so you know the big things outside.
So. Okay, I'll be looking for my updates.
Yes.
On my. Plan here. So. I feel like I need that for continuance, because the further I get into this, the further I more deal, like it's so much. More I need to research and go, so I mean my plan is further along than opposed to. Uh where I want to present it to you guys. Uh let me ask you this question, do you want to see it first before I send it to council or who? Or do you want there it's first before I bring it back to the board to you? What would be more helpful?
If you haven't ready for council, why don't you just send it out in case one of us goes, whoa, that's really weird. Because then at least, then at least it's flagged, and so you can ask, you can say to council.
Yeah.
What are the members asked about this? So, but yeah, I don't.
Mike and everyone coming in. But anyway, so what I'm finding out is uh where it's coming down to, to have your, your bond. Your, I mean, when you say escrow, that could be a cash deposit, you know, you hold that with a treasurer. Let her hold a cash deposit, uh and then a tripartite agreement or a lender's agreement. Those seem to be the three things, lines of credit. You could also include that, uh the. So then you have an agreement, and that's the part I'm working on now, what are the fine points so you each know these things? What do you um. For those working, so we we release the ball, or at the time, the timeframe. You know, two years, three years, two years from when, two years when you record the. The uh the approved subdivision, and at the same time you record. The instrument of truth, you know, with the support or whatever, so two years from that, three years from that, what's doing? I mean, what are some of the lengths of time that subdivisions are?
And once it's done.
Right, but then, no, but if they're not getting it out of time, so you set up a two year, then they have to come, notice public hearing. Ask for an extension, okay, how long do you grant that extension for, these are some of the questions I'm struggling with. But the idea is is that, and then if you grant that extension, then I have to go back to the surety and say, you guys are, you can't forget. So all these things, you kind of across where you. Had to do that, and you grant this extension, that's not the end of the surety, it's like, we didn't know anything about the extension. The service is about to work, and so this is done, you know, so uh lots of little things to catch and to go back on. To make sure that these things, these agreements are going to be airtight. Uh so it's working in the timeframe, the types of sureties, the language in the agreement. Uh who is the surety, how do we? How do we research the surety, or put some fly by night out there that you want to deal with? Keep some type of a list or something, or we 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 talk to um. If it have a term, but there's a uh an agency that you can refer to, that they, you know, you want to stay away from that. They have problems. It's almost like we had the bar on ethics, you know, uh for contracts. So uh yes, it's moving along, um but just need to do another, hopefully I'm gonna have. Something by our next April meeting. Review by you guys and 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 by us, that we can then appropriately decide. Does not need to go to town meeting, it's an internal policy, so it can just be, use a form like select openly. And move forward.
Select board can maybe bless it.
Um I think you should follow up in time if it even needs a select board vote.
That maybe not, yeah.
Because we want to be very clear in terms of what is required, so we're a hundred percent sure that we did it right.
Yeah.
You know, in case there's an issue on that one.
And another thing that was, it's been some time and research is DM out, okay, how do you agree upon? And I'm out, so we don't have a town engineer, so we probably have to go to a third party, get estimates. They can give us an estimate on the construction costs. Then you've got inflation, prevailing wages, and other contingents. So right now, I'm sticking with like a one point two five, so we get an estimate that a draw. Construction cost will be. One million dollars. Will hold up with last year's surety bond or performance guarantee, insurance of performance guarantee for one point two five. You know, and then that that's, you know, that should hopefully cover. All these other contingents, you know, we're prevailing wages, right? Much higher than private, nobody in line. Sure, I'm there, yeah, right, so you gotta account for that. I don't know how much difference in private contractors and some of these subdivision, are they using prevailing wages or is it all market wages?
Uh.
I know, I typically don't, I pay a guy what it feels worth it, yeah, and. Uh so it can vary.
What do you mean that?
Between, you know, a laborer at twenty two dollars an hour and finish carpenter at fifty five or sixty dollars. You know what I mean, your skill level, all of those things fall into play. I mean prevailing wages, so you've got state prevailing wage and you've got. They can, they they they.
It's all they do in the.
Right, and you're going to, you're. That I mean, if contractors are coming into town as a union, that's a whole different, yeah, and. Well, there's a lot of moving parts there that need to be covered, right? So safety precautions is all kinds of stuff. Right, so these are the things you gotta take into consideration, you know, the estimates. Right, I mean, a million dollar bond is nothing today.
Right, yeah, right, that's like, that's a.
He's got a hundred and seventy five million.
So that might be ever a crosswalk downtown, right, I mean, I mean, some of these big projects are doing. You know, their payrolls, two million a week.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, it's it's full up. And I'll just, you know, doing this gives you, going through this exercise really gives you a respect for what developers. For sure, take on, and amount that you carry too, that, you know, on your shoulders, become practical. Yes, it's good, so.
Well, it sounds like you've been making good progress.
I'm making progress, yes, uh hopefully it's good. If you need any questions or stuff like that from me, phone me, yeah, you know, I'll help you anyway, again. All right, or or do some research for you, you know? I mean, I I talk to guys all the time that are doing work, doing the project right now, except for. Uh the owners, they're in, they're in Boston doing monsters projects, like crazy stuff.
Yeah, that's.
You know, the government.
Wait, there won't be bonding matter.
There won't be bonding. So that's in the report on my, and what, also a little pressure of office, um. Am I going into my staff report?
Yes.
Okay, so like jump ahead to number three. Uh so our our solar battery decommissioning report from zero, so I got a email from uh. It's a late last week saying that the McGovern Boulevard thought field was induced, I don't know why, you can give me any reasons. From eight megawatts to five, so that's going to.
National Grid.
National Grid, right, I'm sure that's. We did discuss it, right?
No, that's why.
Um so if it's the capacity to absorb, to take up that that power into that grid, if it's not there. Then that cuts into the home roof solar market, you know, because these people try to sell the solar on their roofs. If the grid isn't there.
Listen, I've been talking to National Grid for a year, because my solar is officially a year old, and I haven't gotten a paper billing statement from them. Since April.
You.
Of last year, and every time I call National Grid, I spend an hour on the phone talking to twenty different people who have. No clue what solar department I need to talk to. So I don't have a lot of faith in the National Grid team to get their act together regarding solar.
You obviously know who Bill Maher is, you should hear about, he was doing something, it took him three years to get a solar tennis hook up in California. So National Grid's.
With my mind, I.
I'm I'm not, I'm not having problems with them, so if you want, take the soft line, see what I can do, you know.
Got it, listen, I have a seventeen point five system, that's the problem, I'm more than a teen.
Oh, yeah, like, then they don't have to return the calls.
I could technically power my entire full socket, we maxed out the 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 panel. My roof with panels, but I won't let it be seen from.
You still have the power to move it up.
I I don't want there to be any. They're the same company I do.
Yeah. Well, worthwhile, except they screwed up my hamburger, but that's another story, we're gonna be here all night if we don't stand.
So Tom didn't didn't give me a timer, I don't know if he's like a weeks, months, or no one does.
Well, because they're gonna have to come back into the new set of plans, I mean, it should be really straightforward, because all they're doing is shrinking it.
A little bit, yeah.
So.
Well, I mean, that that's.
Yeah, I don't see that being an issue.
Uh so that's the plan, uh so I just wrote this this morning from Wayne, did I give you all copies?
Yeah, is it the V, the partial survey results?
Uh, so I forgot the link to. So um I mean, I haven't had a chance to go through these, they are two hundred and twenty nine. Um, so that's putting these in samples. They improve.
Yes, but for the record, not the majority of my.
Try like three percent.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I.
Look, that's more people than the four or five of us writing the whole thing.
This, I agree.
So uh I don't know if we want to go through this now, or we want to take some.
Interesting reading of.
Yeah, I I think it's probably better that we. We can go through and read this a little bit. I mean, because again, it's gonna keep changing as, you know, more people finally fill stuff in.
Reverse, but becoming less so. There was some.
We're talking the sixteenth century, that's not fair, I was born in the seventeenth. Yeah, uh I I would suggest again, if we start pulling highlights out of this, we'll still be talking about it.
Right.
So.
Uh well, of course, I, you know, Wayne's estimate probably won't change that much for the twenty second when they'll have all results.
I know exactly what you're saying.
Oh, no. So, okay, uh next on your report.
Uh two oh one, Hilltop, so. Uh there is. What I'm giving you is the Alien Ward peer review that was done last year. And. Stands to be in the media's. Responses. Uh which then led to these revised plans, so they were to be uh earlier. This week or last week, uh essentially, I think what went there is basically what what. Not huge changes, so the horse riding arena, remember the call Kendra?
Um so there's two on the plan, there was an indoor riding arena and outdoor riding arena. The outdoor riding arena is proposed to be in a space that's already like designated by a wall that's deteriorating. And the indoor riding arena was gonna be to the right of the carriage house, but I don't think he still plans on building that.
Well, one of them's going to be small.
That's the outdoor.
That's the outdoor, okay, so maybe in 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 the detention pond, well, his goal, their goal at this point. The engineer's goal, the average store at this point is to avoid having to go back before the conservation. I don't know, successfully going to be because they have violation. The to their order, to their conditions, right, so don't think that more conservation was running rate. Then I'm gonna get away, not coming back before them, and trying to know how they're gonna mitigate that. Uh but they're working on. Down to two copies, right, um. So. Uh homeowners and Brooklyn scientists, what they believe is that I'm. A friend of Crossman, from Phil Crossman. Uh on this project noted that there was slight conflict between the restoration slash planting plan. So the previous compromised work done clearing the trees and our proposed design. So we updated the plans to avoid this conflict and avoid having to go back to conservation. That's now all work is outside of their jurisdiction. The changes are very minor, the outdoor riding arena was shrunken size and nearby grading and infiltration basis basin are slightly different. Just to get out of any work within the one hundred square. The one hundred thirty, or the two hundred uh feet from the river. All this, all other aspects of the project will be the same, tax can be updated, the van sheet, and we have an updated storm work. For that, I'm saying, they take over, but anymore wants it, that's it. Get the short spot. Hopefully this doesn't set back on a review that may have started on this project, this should allow the previously issued order of conditions from land. Has to conservation for me, because this, this let me know if we'd be getting hot cover or anything else, get back in. Give this back in motion, so uh. Assuming you guys want the conservation. Commission to clear up and resolve that thing first before they step over here and come back here. For this long one.
But what do they need conservation to clear up?
That if they're replied, they're clearing the trees, they clean.
Yeah, but they have a restoration plan that's been proved.
Right, I, I.
But let's hear from Concon, where exactly, are are they all to the right of Concon?
From, I'm firing with them tomorrow night, so.
Great, I mean, they're not in front of us now, so.
I don't provide a recording, but I'm curious to see what they say tomorrow.
Yes. Uh I don't need it, please keep it posted.
Uh you can watch the recordings, I'm not getting involved in interpreting what they're saying.
Phosphon lane, the open space minus the water pumping station is being considered by the conservation. As 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 a conservation restriction taken. Uh Conservation Commission had some questions about that, followed up. Uh we thinking in the. A lot of the questions were around liability, responsibility, operation and maintenance. Um and. Message I'm getting is that there is no such concerns, so there are no such responsibilities for the. Conservation Commission holding this restriction. We're gonna see. The other questions remaining are what's going to happen with the road? And uh that is before the selective. So there is a. Some options there, I don't know, you know, I heard something while finishing, following a previous video there, because it said that before the war.
You mean the approval of the road?
Either approval, acquisition, or.
It's going on the warrant for many.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that, yeah, that's a citizen petition.
Well, this is a petition, right?
The issue that I think concerns the planning board is there's an outstanding order of conditions on the project. That order of conditions has to be completed or their deadline has to be extended.
Yes.
Or the subdivision expires. And I'm not a hundred percent how they're they're. How they're going to comply with the order of conditions based on what I know of it, but I'm I'm certainly interested in seeing that.
Right.
But if they need an extension, we only have one meeting.
Yeah.
And does that need a year?
It would, because it expires.
No, no, it hasn't expired.
Hasn't expired.
If it's not expired, we need to.
I don't, I my thinking, no, it doesn't.
Let's, let's follow up. Just because, you know, May is a busy time and, you know, I don't want to have extra out of cycle meetings for a single project. It can be avoided by good plan.
Yeah, so that's um. Oh, obviously for the completion. Subdivision, right?
Mm-hmm. So, Necro?
Necro, that's. Necro, that's, uh, moving along pretty well, they were before the song board last week, presented their. Responses uh, to the traffic fair review that was prepared for the town by Van Ass Associates. Our peer reviewer was online, was present at the meeting, uh, there was some back and forth. Aided on. The density of the project and related parking, um, there are certain instances, you know. Very healthy, I guess, couldn't be considered very healthy space to unit ratio of one point. It's a smaller project, so there was some some concern about that, they came in with some comparisons. Of other projects, but those projects seem to be larger projects, so I'm not sure how. There's some questions on how valid that comparison is. Uh, one idea that they seemed worth, they seemed. Worthy of consideration, and I uh, think that they may come back as a revised plan showing. Um, one-way circulation. The driveway from Necro to Center Bridge Road. That, and with one-way circulation, you can then go up, design angle parking. That, um, you lose a few spaces, but you're gaining width in the road. So one of the one of the concerns, our peer reviewer, and the width of the travel length, it's only twenty feet. Doing this angle parking gets you two or three more feet. Um, the inconvenience that seemed to be the concern immediately, and moving to. Residents there, maneuvering vehicles into these spaces, so, uh, which we're not in, that's the design now, we're not in. Uh, and depending on this, the original traffic study. Seemed to basically align on a seventeen foot car, which is pretty top hat high. Well, uh.
The average height of a lawn of a vehicle is six and a half to eight feet, depending. On what kind of vehicle it is, my my husband has engineered out the turning radius and every pinch point of that property. It's the sexiest conversation I've had in years, we just sit there looking at calculations for two hours.
They're using this turning point software, both they both use it, and so I think so there was some back and forth. Uh, the big concern really is, um. Yeah, alright, right, and I think that was one of the things about. That Van Ass came at, it was about, these are, you you know. Not everyone has something, God, it's more likely a nine people there, and we start driving SUVs, trucks, hell.
Or put a three bike bike rack on the back of an SUV, or have my truck with the trailer hitch hanging off the back, or. I have a regular bed truck and you get somebody who has a crew cab with a long bed, that that wire truck. Is not making that turn.
So this is, this is why the the emphasis was really on how can we get a wider travel length, you know, so twenty-three, twenty-four feet.
And they still have trash and snow and.
Well, and then that's the main concern is, uh, snowstorm, you know, there really is no place with snowstorm. And so they're being asked to. Come back with something, you know, give it a, about a snow removal. But everyone knows that doesn't happen the day.
Another year or two, it won't be an issue at all.
Right, that's your two. Uh, so activating on April twenty-fifth is going to, you know. Continue the conversation traffic and circulation, but the chief. Chief, uh, still has concerns about off-street parking and the signage.
And enforcement.
There's some questions about. Speed on the road and whether there should be sure or sure not be a four-way stop. Uh, at Necro again, so. So, you know, all the considerations that are continuing, continues to be looked at.
Refresh my memory, and maybe it's just because we haven't had the full stormwater brought in. They're proposing the majority of the runoff go down into that pipe that drains into the national, correct?
Yes.
I mean, it drains directly into the national.
Right, so that's. That's a question that we're also, you know, cause it's, and it's also being. Directed into a catch base and not a manhole, so then you start all the others going on, running, going into that catch base. Why not from the site, which is gonna be even more taxing to the river. I'm meeting with DPW supervisor this week, Wednesday, Thursday, one of those two days. Uh, but the problem is, how do you direct this onsite? Pipe, stormwater pipe, not to the catch base, but across the street to the manhole, okay, which will reduce. That the street run, you know, but it's still going into.
What manhole?
There's apparently this manhole across the street, I haven't.
In front of forty-seven seven bridge?
Yeah, on the opposite side of the road, so now it has to cross that road and you've got sewer, you've got drainage, you've got water. And it's, you know, there's a lot of work to get from there, pass all that. That was rough. Well, direction, you have to change direction and lost moving, all your.
Right, so that's, 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 you know.
Is saying, you know, you really don't, you really don't want that that storm, that stormwater running into that gap facing right. You know, you've got a lot of untreated untreated stormwater, okay, uh, going into the into the road.
Well, if you look at the plan, look at the deeds for the two properties on either side of Main Street. Back in the day before we had town sewer, it's deeded in those two deeds that there's pipes. For drainage directly into the national.
Yeah.
So, which, you know, I'm sure at some point, maybe something was done about it over the years, that was, I mean, they're both anti-homes. My big issue is. Bringing more water across basically somebody else's property and disturbing their property. To get it to a manhole cover.
No, it's just going across the street, right?
So it's not going, it's not going all the way down to Main Street?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Cause I I go for my, yeah, it's just the one, it has to get from one side of the street to the other side.
Okay, cause I was like, it shouldn't be able to cross somebody else's property, because I know where the manhole cover is on Main Street.
So, uh, again, yeah, so I'm meeting with Scott, um, you know, see if he has any ideas. Well, any ideas about how that's now, what he thinks is, you know, where where where. What's the infrastructure that has to be crossed in there? He has that one lines on some dash, showing me these bikes, the 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 elevations of these of these other.
Yeah, cause I. I could never support draining directly into the national, all that unfilled water.
Yeah.
And that's just no.
Well, I'm sure there'll be all kinds of permitting issues around that.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, again, I mean, if you know, the the the, I don't wanna say, the cheap way of the cost saving. Um, way is to.
The budget method.
The budget method, right, the charging method is to drain into the sketch case. Uh, but, you know, again, they're they're going for a lot, and they've gotta turn up, you know, um, so how do you do it? So anyways, these are some of the pushbacks there, and so that.
So they're working through the process and.
Working through the process, so I've got a couple meetings to go.
Oh, anyway.
Yeah, and well, there is a hundred and twenty days.
But if the ZB, I think if they request an extension, and the ZB is willing to grant it.
Yeah, okay, so.
Anyway, um, conservation agents still studying.
Excellent, woo-hoo. Blackstone, the name is Bradstone, Bradstone. Uh, very experienced, uh, twenty-two years in Blueberry. Um, where a lot of it's happened, so, yeah, she appears even there. Uh, so we've been very experienced, and then. Sounds like Lucas started.
Bradford, it's Bradford. Bradford Stair.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, I think we're gonna be very, I think we're a lucky tool from Brad and having from here. I think we've got solid, solid. Uh, the camp project still on hold, welcome back from the state, yes, um, I mean, we're trying to get through the backlog of. Documentation, literature, more project, getting to be myself up to speed on it. Uh, and away from any product, so I can, I don't. End up, these are our last week, this is the feedback on the branding options, I mean. Does the consultants heard that from your stakeholder? Actually, no. Hey, Roger, I like Louis person, they all, they all, thank you, you know, Muley.
Yeah.
Well, there's some, there's some good feedback here, and they're giving us what the consultants. Everybody else.
Oh, okay, I know you.
She's on the call.
Oh, here we go.
Yeah, she locked in. She probably got tied up.
Yeah, so do we have a decision to make here?
No, no, the tennis updates, so, uh, we're saying, we're coming, so that is the. End all of my.
Any correspondence we should know about?
No, no correspondence came in, except for the ones that I told you about, um. Those fantasy, and then there we look through all the ones, uh, but other than that, that mean.
Okay. Um, any new business from either you or the board?
Um, I do, well, I wanna say that. Um, well, I reported a few today, we mentioned that here, the application for the.
Yeah, why don't we wait on that until we get, until we get a little bit more out of it, so we got a follow-on application from, remember the A and R, we did a white pond road?
Yeah.
Well, now they'd like to build a pair of duplexes on that land, um. And they are asserting that the flexible development allows them to build residential construction in easy zone. Um, I read the zoning and I don't see, I don't get the same interpretation, so, um. We need to follow up with council and and find that out.
So I just.
So that's on, that's on them, we don't need, we don't need to be involved, I mean, basically, they're coming in and saying, we think we can build this in this zone because of this. And, you know, I looked at the code and like, I don't think the code says that.
Are we down a flag, is this going down a place?
No. No. But it's still, it's, you know, I I mean, I read through the zoning, and it's, you're allowed to build with the underlying zone allows, yeah, so, we'll see.
Cause I did call, you know, the plan just came in today, the application just came in this morning, and it's impossible to get it ready. It's it's a special permit, so we would never be able to notice the, uh, February, I don't even know when, it's April twenty-second.
Oh, no way.
And, uh, and so I followed those, and you're not, you're at the Urals. This would be heard in June ten, kind of fall back on that, I think, right, so they're.
Well, I mean, they have some homework to do in the meantime, you know, show us, show us this is legal.
Well, that's, I mean, that's what my kind of vacuum. We need to black families, look at what they're trying to do, follow mass and crush this. And see if that, you know, I, do they, do they get this right?
Ray, is there a reaction from the other residents of the White Pondwood area to the proposal to build multi-family wells? Probably.
Not yet.
Know about it.
No, no one knows about it.
We just got it.
So there, um, you know, once it gets out there, once we post the public hearing, and we'll see the kind of position. Do you have any idea what that, I say, I don't know anything about it.
Well, don't wanna speculate, so, okay, any other new business from anyone? In that case, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
We gotta wait one more minute.
Yes.
Well, just because I don't think we've ever gotten done quite so fast.
Oh, come on.
So reduce, I'm like even the hers.
We don't have too much.
Just a little.
Motion to adjourn. No, no, wait a minute.
Oh, no, no, I don't have a report to argue.
Regina not present this week, and she's on.
No, 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 she's on here, she's on, she she joined just after the two continuances.
Okay.
Seven twenty.
Perfect.
Okay, so she.
Ross, that's why you're here, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn and a second. And a seven fifty, so unless I'm hearing some discussion, I'll call for a vote, Regina. Are you in favor of a journey? You're gonna have to unmute. Uh, was it something I said? Okay, uh, voted a German, George.
Yes.
Kendra.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Frank. Yes, we stand adjourned at seven fifty P M. And, oh, oh, Regina's connecting to audio, so maybe she'll be the fifth vote. The wonders of zoom, either way, we stand adjourned.